As Vice Chair of the Hartford Board of Education, I hereby call to order the August 28th, 2012 Regular Meeting of the Board. I wish to extend a warm welcome to everyone present and to our television viewers. The Board Superintendent and I are pleased that you have joined us and we celebrate achievement, review information, and make policy decisions related to the effective operation of the Hartford Public Schools. This is a regular meeting and all items that will be discussed or voted on this evening have been posted as required by state law. As the Hartford Board of Education, we are here to set goals, listen to the reports of the Superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, and personnel appointments, and make policy for the district. We are not here to make management decisions or solve the problem of individuals. Management is the responsibility of the Superintendent. The monthly meetings of the Board are open to the public. They are the time when the Board conducts its business of governing the school system in a public arena. The regular meetings are not meetings with the public. Therefore, comments from the audience will be confined to the time designated for the public to address the Board. Since it is legally mandated that proceedings be accurately recorded, I may have to ask for order periodically should noise begin to interfere with our recording capabilities. I am pleased that you have taken the time to join us this evening and we are very proud of this school system and thank you for your interest in the Hartford Public Schools. At this time, we will hear from those who have signed up and we will... Oops. Oh, I'm sorry. We're going to have a welcome from Peter. Yes, thank you.
Well, thank you. I appreciate it. My name is Peter Yard. On behalf of the students, the parents, the guardians, the faculty staff, welcome you to our school. We're very, very proud. I am extremely proud of this school and this community. We had an amazing opening day where we welcomed 253 new students to our already 360 students. They were extremely happy and pleased to be connected to this amazing building, this amazing program, but most importantly, the people that are inside this building made these great connections with our students. So, welcome. We're pleased that you're using our facilities and I invite you as you are walking out to enjoy the butterfly area. Just today on cue, we had 150 minors emerge.
(Laughter)
It was the 600 kids that were emerging as they started to get connected to our programs and our faculty staff. So, welcome and thank you. I appreciate this. I have a Governance Council meeting right now in the library, so I'm going to zip out what I wanted to do.
Thank you so much for having us. Thank you.[213.31][213.31](Applause) At this time, before we begin our public session, can we have a roll call, please?
(Inaudible)
Present.
Here.
Here.
Okay, at this time, we will hear from those who have signed up to speak, beginning with Marilyn Jacino and then followed by Haya Cynthiaany.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Marilyn Jacino. I'm the mother of a 14-year-old son who attends RJ Kinsella Magnet School of Performing Arts. I'd like to address an issue that happened on July 9th... I'm sorry, July 10th. On the evening of July 9th, it was brought to my attention by my son. He'd experienced an uncomfortable situation with a teacher speaking to him in an intimidating manner after he'd left his belongings in the classroom on the first day of summer school. The teacher immediately became frustrated and began telling my son he'd have to wait, continued saying he has a meeting to attend, he should've known to bring his belongings, and he should be a man and look him in the eyes. This is not the first time I've had concerns with this particular teacher on how his temper should be controlled as well as his interaction with students should be improved. Prior concerns from the previous year were addressed directly to the teacher as well as the principal, but only resulted in temporary improvement. On the morning of July 10th at 7:37 a.m., I attempted to call the teacher to express my concerns as well as hear his version of what happened. When I got the teacher on the phone, I stated who I was and the reason for my call. It was then he hung up the phone on me in the presence of other faculty members. I was parked outside when this happened and immediately made my way inside to further discuss the matter and hopefully get his version of the story. It was then the teacher refused to communicate with me and refused to conduct himself in a professional manner as a school teacher in the presence of my son, other students, and other faculty members. Refusing to communicate with a parent and conducting bullying-like behavior is unacceptable for any school teacher. I am very concerned with an angry individual such as himself engaging himself in educational learning. He is not the type of individual you should have your children under the care of as he has potential to damage your children mentally and emotionally. You can't teach children one thing and display behavior that is contrary to your teachings. I immediately requested my son to be removed from that classroom. 14 days after the incident, the teacher sent an email advising if I'd like to meet with him to further discuss the matter, he'd be available for the remainder of the week. I immediately met with him to get his version of the story. At the meeting, he didn't show much remorse. In fact, he continued to emphasize my son should've known to take his belongings. Unfortunately, after the meeting, I was still uncomfortable with the teacher's entire demeanor. I was the school vice president for the... I was vice president of school PTO for a few years and I know what a good school like Kinsella Magnet School is. This is not a good representation of the school and I sincerely hope my concern is heard loud and clear and taken very seriously. No parent should have to experience a teacher speaking to their child in that manner as well as refusing to communicate with a parent. The teacher clearly has a problem controlling his temper and it needs to be addressed to prevent similar situations from escalating into something more serious. Thank you.
Ms. Jacino, I want to just encourage you and also introduce you to Diana Roburge Wenzel, who is just two rows back from you. She's our Assistant Superintendent of Pre-K 12 Education. She can make sure that you have the right people around you to address this matter.
Okay. Thank you for listening.
Superintendent.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, Board members. Hope you all had a restful summer. I'm Haya Cynthiaany, parent and a community advocate for the Hartford Public School. I go wherever, whenever, whichever school is needed. I do do that and I like doing that. I'm here because June, I brought up like about 800 signature from Hartford High about starting the school day at 7:15 and getting out at 2:15. And the reason for that, and the more and more I talk to people, they're saying it makes sense. And the reason for that is our kids get to school 7:15, have breakfast, get to class on time, getting out at 2:15. A lot of our kids, again, I want to emphasize, have to work for a living, support their family sometimes. And then the other one is the sports. Suburban school let out at 2:15 and our kids get out at 3 something. That's very much conflicting. Yeah, I know we want our kids to stay longer in school, but that's not really the answer especially for the high school. Elementary is fine, but I think we should really seriously look at the high school and get them out at 2:15 like we usually do. Weaver is at 7:15, 2:15. I just see it's all right. I mean, if you're going to be bussing kids, you know, you can have two shifts here. High school get out, get there, get to school in time, get back, bus, get back to get the elementary school. I think it's just a smart and wise things to do. And I'm hoping that you will consider that because it's really needed for these kids. And the thing is, whether we let them out or not, they're leaving. And I'm telling you, you can talk to teachers and they can tell you, "Look at the last period of their class." The kids are all gone. They are going to leave. So, again, to do the right thing, let's get it straight on track and make sure for the next school year coming up, we can make sure all the high school get out and get early in time. So, I'm hoping you really seriously consider that.
Ms. Jacining, in response to that, you brought this up at the last Board meeting or two Board meetings ago.
Yeah, that was true.
And I had mentioned to you that we would look at this this fall. The fall is the time to look at it. We would have to look at the entire transportation schedule. We have all of our schools on tiers. Any movement of any group of schools to a different tier, movement of schools, high schools to Tier 1, which is our earliest group of buses, would mean shifting every schedule in the entire district. So, this isn't to say that we can't look at this. Every year, we do look at priorities based on the needs of our schools and the requests of our schools. The request of the high schools is something that we need to look at, but it is going to impact. Just wanted everyone to be aware, it will impact the schedule of almost every school in the district or at least two-thirds of the schedules of the schools in the district in order to make that shift. So, we will look at that this fall. I will engage the principals in that conversation and then I will certainly report back publicly so that parents know where we're headed with this. But there also may be cost factors to this. All of that, we need to look at in the fall in order to prepare for the spring budget for the following year.
Okay. And it seems Hartford High went really smooth this morning and I'm hoping all the other school went that way. At your speech with the welcome back, the teachers to school, what I have to say is that, you know, we need to make sure that our teachers feel supportive. And I think it's really important to come from you as a Superintendent to say here, "I am here for you guys." It wouldn't hurt for you to go into those schools, take them one or two or three a month, get into those schools and see what's going on in the classroom or whatever the case may be. Yes, you hire your principal to do their job, but I think for you, it's critical for you to get in those schools, let the teachers know, feel that you care about what they're doing. It's really, really important. Okay? I really, really appreciate if you do that.
I absolutely agree. Thank you.
Okay? Again, welcome back and I want to welcome back all the teachers and their hard work and the effort and I'm here for anyone that needs my help. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we will have...
Millie.
It looks like...
Millie Cardulis.
Cardulis, followed by Hestenio Soto.
Hello, Vice Chair, Board, Superintendent, Mr. Mayor. First day of school, finally. And this is a beautiful school. And I tell you, the waterfall, all of this good stuff, but it still brings me back to Burns and, you know, the mold and the mildew that the kids are exposed to, the poor air quality in the building. And it disturbs me that in Hartford, we created these two school districts. You know, the Magnet Schools, all the buildings are absolutely gorgeous. Then you go to a place like Burns, and I always bring up Burns because I worked there for four years, so I know the ins and outs, but it's not just Burns. It's Simpson-Waverly, it's Milner, you know, it's these older, but Clark, you know, it's these older buildings and our kids are being exposed to a lot of horrible things and nothing's being done. And then I come here and I'm like, "Wow, this is freaking gorgeous," you know? And it's sad that right there on Putnam Street, you know, I had to fight to get the roof done. You know, we had pre-K kids sleeping on moldy carpets. You know, I had to fight for this, you know? Took a lot of heat for that, you know? And this is sad and I really hope that someday, somebody's going to really, really address that. Because through the chef ruling, which is all about race, we've created the most classes school district going. And this is, and as people of color, this is sad and we really, really need to address this. All right? So, that was my first thing. The second thing, five years running, supplies, supplies, supplies for the custodians. I've been talking about this forever and I've heard every excuse from the Board this year. Mr. Mayor, Star Hardware, who is our main supplier for toilet paper, paper towels, hand soap, wax that you see here at Mary Hooker, there is none on that floor. There's no wax because they don't have any supplies here neither because the award letter didn't come out until August 18th. August 18th? How do we get everything done? As a head custodian, and for the record, I'm the head custodian at Buckley High School and a parent at Buckley and Class School, Annie Fisher, and former union president. How do we get the schools done without our supplies? As a parent, I want the schools open all the time. I am for summer school. I was a Kinger summer school growing up in Windsor. I'm for summer school. I'm for late nights. I'm for Saturdays and Sundays for these buildings to be open so we can have a safe place for our students to be. No question. However, we also need the proper staffing in these buildings. You know, we're talking, you know, you go to Milner School, which, you know, has been a big thing going on. You go to Sands, you go to Simpson-Waverly, you go to Clark School, you go to McDonough. These are two and three men's schools. How do you get anything done in these schools with summer school and everything else that we have going? You can't get anything done. And now let's compound it with no supplies, five years in a row running. And there'll be, every excuse is going to come out of here, every excuse. And I've heard it all, but the bottom line is the finished product. Here it is, the first day of school in this beautiful building in Mary Hooker doesn't have any wax on the floors and the supplies are dwindling. So, you know, I get back to the staffing. We could find $3 million for the CMT test scores, which I'mma always say is illegal money. I don't care what anyone says. You know, we have to make sure that we're staffing the buildings properly through, with the custodians as well if we want to create that clean, safe, healthy environment. And lastly, vocational, vocational, vocational. We got to get back, we need some wood shop, we need some metal shop. I have a freaking beautiful auto center at Buckley and it's not even open. We're working so hard and kids are lining up and we can't even offer that to them? You know, we really got to start really addressing those issues. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we will hear from Thais Ohalaza. Okay, I'm sorry. And then Lois Barber.
Tice.
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 Oh, okay.
Ohalaza.
Thank you. I called, yeah, I called.
Oh, did she want to go first? It's fine.
Yes, come on, please.
Yes.
Good evening.
On the behalf of the HPA President, I'm going to present to you the new elected HPA Committee. My name is Latoya Thompson. I'm the Secretary of HPA.
Hello. Good afternoon. My name is Hester Venusoro. I am the President of the HPA.
Good afternoon. My name is Jane Russell. I'm the Treasurer of HPA.
Good evening. My name is Maria Vargas and I am the... I forgot my title. Sorry.
Sorry. Sorry for that.
She came out of work.
Yeah, and she has a new position, so it's a little difficult for her. But we are the new HPA Committee and we would like to, you know, work hand-in-hand with y'all. And if anything that y'all need to know, feel free to come to us and let us know. If y'all need anything about the bylaws, we work with our bylaws. Everything that we do is through our bylaws. So, y'all need anything with the records or the bylaws, the minutes, we have.
I want to thank you for introducing yourselves, but I do want to state that there are some conflicting, there's conflicting information that I am receiving as the Superintendent of the school district. And it's very important for me to have a great working relationship with the HPA leadership. I had two meetings called with those who were stating to me that you're the new leadership and those who were stating to me that the elections have not been run yet properly. Neither me, in neither meeting did I have both parties at the table currently together. And until both parties are willing to meet with me, I will not recognize a new leadership for HPA in terms of this. It's very important for us to have a good working relationship, come to the table, and let's talk about what's going on because what's important is that we don't have a divided parent leadership. We have, we have to have a united parent leadership. I have been very adamant that I'm going to be pushing in terms of the Board's, meaning the administration's agenda, to have parents as partners and to push this forward to that next level. We've done a lot of great work together and now we have to continue to do great work together. But once again, I'm going to say until you actually come and meet with me and are willing to be at the table, I'm not going to recognize another, a change in leadership. That's not to say that there hasn't been one or there has been one, but we have to be at the table together.
Okay.
Okay, so if you can please follow up, let's all be at the table together.
Great.
Okay. And I prioritize my time to make sure I'm available for everyone to be with me in the office together.
Okay. You know, we'll be sunk down.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now we will have Tice, followed by Lois Barber.
Hi, Dr. Kishimoto, Mayor Sagata, rest of the Board members. My name is Tice Ohalaza. I'm a parent at Naylor School. I have three boys that attend there and my concern today is uniforms. I am for school uniforms. I am concerned about the recent mandatory logo and the economic burden that it's really causing on parents. I'm just going to use a quick example. I went to Old Navy a couple weeks ago and they had polo shirts, every color you can imagine for $5. Yet, I'm forced to go through a vendor, Connecticut Shirtman, to get, not, there's another vendor, but the prices are just about the same, to get my children's logos. And I'm just going to put it out there, I spent $211 for 15 shirts just to be able to get them, five shirts each. We compared, I compared receipts with someone else and they only paid $75, you know, for the same amount of T-shirts. So, I'm just, I didn't come just to complain. I have solutions or suggestions. I think that we should have the logos should be made available to parents so that either they can sew them on or iron them on, just a more economical approach. The original reason why uniforms were put in place, war, so that children could, there wouldn't be a comparison with name brands, but also so that it would be affordable for parents. So, that's just my concern for today. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your suggestions.
Yes, please.
I know there are a few schools that took that, took those steps. I think looking at providing that opportunity across schools is important.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Chair, thank you. That's pretty nice. Ms. Chair, I just wanted to respond to you. If you're interested, please leave your email with our Board Assistant Vivian Dorfman. And if you'd like, we could discuss this further at the Policy Committee meeting, which will be in the first week of September and we'll review that policy because we put that together about a year ago and I want to make sure that it's happening the way it should be. You have some good ideas there. So, leave your email out and I'll get in touch.
The store, she has my email.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Lois Barber.
Good evening. How's everyone? Millie's going to be speaking on my behalf.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome back to the new school year. I just wanted to talk about a concern in regards to Milner at Jamokey Academy. There has been a parent that has been offered a job verbally at Milner and throughout this whole turnaround planning committee. And after all of that was said and done with, they then told her that there was no job. After several people within Milner and Jamokey told her that she had the job. So, I don't understand that and I don't know how this works with Jamokey and Hartford Public Schools, but I think that that's very demeaning and humiliating to a parent that has countless hours at Milner, over 400 hours that she has engaged herself at Milner, and to do this to her is just unacceptable. So, whoever is in charge of Milner and the staff at Milner, please look into it because this cannot be done to parents throughout Milner for whatever reason. It can't. That is not the proper protocol. So, please look into it, anyone here on this Board. Thank you so much.
Lois, thank you for joining us and raising that issue. I am not aware of the details of this, but if you can leave the details, all of the, the employees at the Thurman L. Milner School are employees of the district. We have partnerships in place, but the employees are employees of the district. So, if we can, if I can have the details of who we're talking about and what the situation is, then we can look into what has occurred.
Thank you.
Thank you. And actually, while you're up here, I just want to publicly thank you. Over the summer, we had this crash course in pulling together the Jamokey Academy design for Thurman L. Milner School as a redesign under the state, the state's new policy on turnaround school designs. And Ms. Barber and her team of School Governance Council parents reached out to parents in the district and also sat at the table for countless hours with us and I appreciate the work that you did as well as your leadership there. Thank you.
Next, we will hear from Millie Arseniegus, followed by Kerence Blake.
Thank you and welcome again. I just wanted to talk about two critical issues that I have been noticing out in the district. My name is Millie Arseniegus. I am a parent. My son goes to University High Magnet. He's going to be a 10th grader this year. And I looked at these reading scores for third grade and I looked at this report that went out to parents when it was announced, that came out from the district. In order for us to stay true to parents and their children, we have to be transparent. There is good news and we celebrate all good news when it relates to our children and parents, all the work parents have done and staff and teachers. But there's also another side. And we as parents, we need to know that other side and we need to know the strategies on how we're going to work together to accomplish what we need to accomplish. I mean, to see third grade reading scores, a 20-point difference in some of these schools, that's disheartening, that's a setback. We're not going to make, anything's possible, but from what I've seen with the data, we're not, we're going to have to play catch-up with some of these schools. So, you know, all, I realize there's good news, but we also have to stay true and make it where it's understandable to parents rather than, you know, focusing on, you know, the six-year growth, have something in there of what was last year and what was this year. We need to know that. There was a school, school matrix done years back that parents loved. They understood it and there was nothing wrong with that because you knew what schools went down and you knew what schools went up. And parents were on board and they knew if they needed to work harder or, or, you know, work harder to just sustain it. So, I just wanted to let you guys know that I'm not the only parent doing this. Parents have grown in capacity. They weren't born yesterday. They've been through, they've been here throughout this reform for five years already. So, when you, when you have a report like this and you don't show from one year to the next, it's kind of hard for parents to figure out where they're at. So, and then on another note, the uniforms, there are a lot of families out there that don't have, not even a home. You know, they're homeless, they're in shelters, they have five kids, some of them, five different schools. To have one, one uniform cost $90? One uniform. I mean, we went into the uniform policy because we wanted to make it more affordable for our children or for our families to buy uniforms. Let's not go overboard. Let's make it affordable for families. And if we have to make something up to get by this year, please, Mayor, Dr. Kishimoto, this Board, we need to do that because families are hurting right now. Thank you.
Corinne Blake?
Good evening. My name is Corinne Blake. I'm a resident here in the city of Hartford. I have three girls, one that has graduated from classical magnet, two who are out of classical magnet, one has graduated, and there's still a little one there. I have three matters that I'd like to bring to the Board's attention this evening. And the first one is the Hartford Public School Welcome Center to all the persons who sat together, came up with this brilliant idea to move the Welcome Center from its previous location and bring it downstairs of where it is currently. I must say, hooray, two thumbs up. I had to go into the Welcome Center. I've been to the Welcome Center numerous times with families, with issues, and I had to go yesterday. And the Welcome Center was full. Everyone was happy. The children had a nice little corner. They were reading. They were playing. The minute you got in, there was somebody there to greet you, to see what your need was, and tell you where you were going to be. I was even able to be told how long I'd have to wait to be seen. So, great job to all the people who came up with the wonderful idea to move the Welcome Center to that location, and also to provide additional people there to be able to help you and to also make sure that you're in an area that you can privately discuss whatever issues you have. And have such nice space. There are families there talking to each other. I was able to go to the table, get my schedule for the year, get some information. And so that, it was really a good thought. That was one good thing that we have started off the school year with. So, kudos. The other issue, the last board meeting that I attended just before we went on summer break, I had to speak to Dr. Cologne Rivas about summer youth employment. And I must say thank you for the help that we got from you in regards to that. And I'm hoping that during the year, before we get to the next group of summer students going to work, that we will be able to continue this dialogue so that families are aware. So they're not waiting for the last minute for their children to be putting in applications and rushing to find out where they will go. Because we cannot estimate the value that this has to our families. Apart from the children earning, the fact that they begin to learn those skills that are needed in the workplace, understanding what is expected and required of them is vital. The other issue I need to touch briefly on is my issue that I brought up at that meeting too, on special education. I've had dialogue throughout the summer with the staff in the Special Ed Department. I think I could probably call everybody's name now. But I must say that that issue has been resolved as much as it can be at this point. And so I'm grateful to, again, the people at the Welcome Center and the staff members, Mr. Papas, Ms. Kennedy, and those people who I had to interact with in the Special Ed Department. I still have a concern on that, though, Dr. Kishimoto, that I'd like to be looked at, and that is the communication. We still, I personally, you know, I'm there, I'm there, I'm there. I walk with my file. I have my questions. I have my emails. But I'm still concerned about many of our families who are not able to continue to be the advocate that they should be for their children. How do we make sure that we have that? I'm still, you know, I'm still having that question about how we communicate with our family. How do we raise the bar? How do we get to that as standard that we want to get to? We know that we have the parental involvement, because our children are in school. How do we get to that point where we have the level of engagement that we want to have? And I am not going to put it all on parents. Because many of the times, that's where it falls at the feet of parents. That parents are not this, parents are not that. If I took that the very first time I was approached in a school and told that, "Oh, I'm there too often," I would never be the parent that I'm supposed to be for my children. And so until we get to that level of understanding that parents have to be involved, have to be engaged, and it has to be that reaching out from the schools. And I'm going to ask you, Dr. Kishimoto, to hold your principals accountable for that engagement that you want in school governance, in PTO. And until they are held accountable, we are never going to be able to move forward with the reading scores that Millie's talking about, with the school uniform issues that other people are talking about. We are never going to get to those levels until we have that level of engagement. And it's not, it's a two-way street. We are sending our children. That means that we want to do something. So, thank you for looking into that.
Thank you, Ms. Blake. I appreciate your feedback.
Now we'll hear from Shontae Brody, followed by Shelley Davis.
Hello.
Good evening.
I'm a parent of a 6th grade Renzulli Academy student. And I'm happy about uniforms, because we're not obligated with the logo. Five pair of pants, five shirts, $105. Where we're told that it'll be optional. We don't have to have the logo, but we can. I could see some cases where logos are appropriate, like on a trip or something, but that is a burden. So I piggyback on those that have come before me. I'm glad to see the gentleman constantly brings up the custodial supplies. In a previous school, the PTO, we would buy with the PTO money some custodial supplies. It was that bad. They just saying it didn't come in. They felt the principal wasn't pressing enough. But that is a concern in many schools. And we all want our kids to be in a very clean environment. I was hoping Mr. Pollan was here, because I, well, the mayor is. I think there should be a sort of marriage between the Hartford Public Library and Hartford Public Schools. Rarely do I, I got on the mailing list, but rarely, like, do I get an invitation to come out to participate in some of the events at the library. If we have issues or concerns or where we need our kids to be with reading, if we have a marriage between Hartford Public Schools and the library, I'm thinking that we can impact that. And I think that's missing. We don't have a direct connection. I don't think many parents in the community, if you live near a library, you might be more, you know, you might know what's going on. But generally speaking, there's not a connection as I feel it should be. And they have some wonderful programs, but the community knowing about it and taking advantage of it, I think that's lacking. I'm happy about the Welcome Center also, and I look forward to the school year.
Ms. Brody, thank you for your suggestions around how to tighten up and prove upon the connection with the Hartford Public Library. We did kick off the year with about 1,700 participants. That was absolutely wonderful between our staff internally and the Hartford Public Library staff. And I think that that's a great example of the potential of what could be happening and something's happening ongoing. And it's a strong interest that Mr. Pollan and I continue to explore in terms of how to do this. The other areas around libraries, the Hartford Public Libraries being built in conjunction with our schools. So there's also that. We have the Twain Branch right now at Hartford Public High School. And we're also looking at West Middle's construction project that's coming up as a place to also place a library branch with the city. And so there are lots of opportunities, I think, to expand upon that. And any specific ideas you have, that parents have?
I do.
Certainly would love to hear those. I know Mr. Pollan would certainly be open to hearing those as well.
And I remember one thing that I did want to mention. At Renzulli this summer, it was a partnership with UConn. Mr. McCaskill came in, a meeting with me, and he explained how it should be. But I have, when we have agencies coming into the schools to deal with our children, they have to abide by what we say. These are our children. This is what... Because it was a particular staff member that I think I'm pretty level-headed, but it was making me want to go to the school and have nasty words with this woman. It's, I just think if we have a standard on how, if you're saying the teachers are going to deal with our children this way, anyone else that interacts with our kids should be held to the same standard. It was just some concerns there, but Mr. McCaskill assured he's gonna, he made it clear to the director, but just for all agencies dealing with our children in our schools, period. Whatever the teacher is held to, you're held to the same thing when interacting with our kids. But I'll talk to you about the ideas I have for the library.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Honorable Mayor, Superintendent, and members of the Board, on behalf of the Executive Committee of the Hartford Federation of Parent Professionals, I would like to state that we look forward to a year which we can all work together for the good of the students of the city of Hartford. I would like to note that last year, the first year that Dr. Kishimoto, Superintendent, directed affairs for the Hartford Public School, showed that management and union could cooperate for the good of the children and the city employees. We appreciate that cooperation and trust that this year will prove as productive. And with that being said, we have some issues at Milner, but we're going to deal with our issues with HR at this point. There are a couple of things that we do agree with Andrea Johnson, so we're sitting here in support of that.
Ms. Davis, I look forward to another year of working together.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Andrea?
Good evening, Superintendent, Board members. I would like to bring up a subject about Milner School and the way the school is now being referred to by the Hartford Board of Education. On a recent list of schools with addresses and phone numbers supplied by the Board of Education, Milner School is listed as Jamoki Academy at Milner School. This is not correct. The school is called Thurman L. Milner School. The administration of instruction will follow the Jamoki model. Jamoki Academy is a charter school. Milner School is a Hartford Public School. As a Hartford Public School, the name of the school should be listed by its official name. A description of the kind of school should follow the official name. Also, please be aware that Milner is not the only school that is listed on this official sheet with the official name listed after the description of the school. I'm going to give you a few examples on how this list brings this forward. American Choice at Sand School. Asian Studies at Henry C. DuWright/Joseph Bellisi School. Early Reading Lab at Raymond Betance School. Environmental Science Magnet School at Mary Hooker. Expeditionary Learning Academy at Moylan. Latino Studies at Burns School. Montessori Magnet at Annie Fisher School. STEM Magnet at Annie Fisher School. And STEM School at Betance School. To place the official name of the school after the newly created name or content name is a disrespect to the person and families for whom the school was named. These fine people were important folks who made great contributions and commitments to the city of Hartford. They were honored by having a school named for them. Students who attend the school should have the knowledge of who the school is named for. This is the case at, one example, at John C. Clark School, named to honor the first African-American city council member in Hartford. If you enter Clark School, the former principal, I believe, Ms. Bailey, Dr. Bailey, has a very, very wonderful display, old pictures and pictures of when Mr. Clark was put onto the city council or elected onto the city council, with a history of who he was. Once we locate the formal name of schools after the kind of school, we begin to lose not only the history of our schools' names, but the honor of the person for whom the school is named. I have brought my thoughts forward to Superintendent Kishimoto and her cabinet, and now ask the Board to be aware of this concern and to please move forward to rectify the situation. Thank you very much.
I just want to mention to the public my response to this issue that was raised by Ms. Johnson, which is when the school design names were being revisited, even by this Board, there was a decision at that time with the input of School Governance Councils of members of school design teams around naming the academy at the name of the school. And that was a format used. And so the suggestion before us is whether we want to revisit that so that... So there was no intention of not emphasizing the name of the school. The intention was to say there was an academy at the name of the school. That was the emphasis, that's the way it was written. That was feedback we got even at Hartford High. That's actually where the discussion started, where we had three academies at Hartford Public High School, which was important to emphasize the name of the school. And so I think that if there are suggestions for other ways of revisiting this, then it certainly noted what has been brought forth.
And just as an answer to that, in all due respect, Hartford Public High School is on the list as Hartford Public High School Law and Government Academy and the rest of the academies. But Hartford Public High School, as Buckley High School, are also, is also on the list with that first. And it's just the name of the school is what the city has agreed to many, many years ago. And to change the name of the school, I don't know if you ever read the part of the administrative manual or the city, I believe it's the city's part. It's very, it's a very big deal. It takes months to do it. I have investigated this in the past when our former superintendent wanted to call the Hartford Public Schools "the Hartford System of Schools." So I'm very happy to hear that, you know, we went back to what we really are. Thank you.
Now, the name of the school and the history of the naming of schools is extremely important. And this Board and the prior Board made the decision that there was going to be no name changes of buildings or schools put forth during the last six years. And there are no current, I think, suggestions at the table regarding any school to that matter. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
Next, we will hear from Rosa Morales, followed by Paul Holzer.
I'm glad that my mayor is here, because he was going to be my next call. But I don't have to, because you can hear my complaint. And this is my complaint. I think I already spoke once on McDonough School. I work very hard in this corner over here. And when the people come and cut the grass, as you can see when you came in, you should see the grass all on the road. So the city trucks come and clean, and the Board of Education people come, cut the grass, and leave all the mess over there. I don't want it over there. I work very hard. And not only that, when it rains, the rains pull the grass down, and it covers the drainers, and then us coming in, we have to stay out because it blocked the street. And that is a no-no-no. So I do call every day, almost every day, everything that happens, I call Dolores. That poor Dolores is my secretary too, because I call her all the day, every day. So, and I'm not going to stop, because I live in that corner, and the mayor knows how hard I work there. All my city council Louise know, everyone knows how hard I work in that corner. Feeding the police, if you see me... Feeding the police, if you see me with the police, because I call them, I drive them crazy, because they need to come and see our street, this area. Otherwise, this area would not be in this way, because the mayor know how nasty this area was. And I'm not going to be there as long my law has in this corner. So you, mayor, you get busy, and you guys get busy and tell Basano, I don't know what happened to Basano. I start with Basano, and he knows me all very well, but he's not listening, so I gotta go higher.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
So can you please tell Basano he need to clean that? Right now, he has to come and clean all of that street, because it's really nasty. Please.
Thank you, Ms. Morales.
Thank you, and God bless you all, and I love you all.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Superintendent, Board members. I'm going to try to speak briefly tonight, but before I get into comments, just want to reflect on the bus tour this morning that I thought was phenomenal. For those who had a chance to go, just a great opportunity to see and be inspired by the students that are learning on the first day of school, but also the staff that continue to defy the odds and improve schools in Hartford. Just kudos to all who made that happen. Very wonderful, just a great reminder of all that's positive in Hartford Public Schools and how far we've all come. Also, regarding the Welcome Center movement, just, you know, for an organization like ours, can't tell you how happy we are to see the focus being put on family engagement this last year and into this year. The movement of the Welcome Center is one thing, but also the creation of a department focused on early literacy and parent development. We've got a lot of high hopes in that department, having a strong impact on the entire district with a cabinet-level position. And it's great to see, you know, the third grade promise, that goal, you know, driving parent engagement as a means to closing the achievement gap and not just kind of a box that gets checked off, you know, at certain schools. So phenomenal to see that. We've done this before, just want to take a minute to introduce Achieve Hartford to the community. There's new teachers, new principals, new folks in the school community here. So very briefly, you know, Achieve Hartford is an independent organization of business and community leaders, supporting effective and sustained school reform in the Hartford Public Schools. What we do basically is two things. On one hand, we're trying to drive accountability for results through the analysis of student achievement and school performance data, as well as evaluating certain things like student-based budgeting, school governance councils, aspects of the reform that we think the public would like to know more information about. But on the other hand, we're really trying to drive engagement of the entire community in school improvement, from policymakers down to parents and everyone in between. There's so many school improvement efforts going on throughout the city, and it's so critical for this to work in the long term, for folks to really own all of the work that's happening in the school district. So focus my comments, as I did this time last year, on just a couple of things that we'd really like to see happen this year in the Hartford Public School District. Last year, my comments focused on kind of execution of strategies on the ground and communications. You know, amazing to see what's happened around early literacy and third grade reading and Batances. I mean, just even the focus today on the bus tour of what's happening to scale best practices is just, again, a great focus on execution, what's working, how to scale it. Would love to see that this year also focus at the high school level. You know, when we did our analysis of student achievement data, it was just glaring to us that high school is still just such an area of challenge for the school district. I mean, incredible things are happening throughout the elementary and middle school grades, but in the redesigned high schools, there's still just such a struggle. And we think that, you know, the way that it has been done to set an aggressive and ambitious goal and let that drive execution needs to happen also at the college readiness or high school level. And people really need to know what that means, what it means to be truly college and career-ready and not just academically, and to set some standards and to have those standards really drive change at the high school level, so that we can all feel really good about every graduate really being college and career-ready. We mentioned communications last year. We will continue to mention this until we think it's, you know, a strength of the district. You know, we're getting there, but would love to see more communications, as folks have mentioned, an informed community is also much more demanding. So more information is better than less. It's, an example, you know, Rossin being part, having a strategy to be in two schools, middle and elementary now being combined back to pre-K eight. You know, I get a lot of questions as to how that relates to the middle school redesign strategy. I don't know, you know, look forward to hearing about it, but just more communications is better than less, and also communications between board and superintendent and cabinet. Would love to see that be a priority this year. If we can have everyone at the top on the same page, that'll breed the confidence that everyone needs down below the food chain. So congratulations on a fantastic start to a 2012, 2013 school year. Look forward to continuing to be a very strong partner with the Hartford Public School District.
Okay, thank you. That ends our public comment section at this point. We will have our reports, beginning with reports. Well, he's not here, so I won't be making that.
Okay, I'll do mine.
Well, then we'll have the superintendent at this point.
Good evening. Thank you to everyone for coming out. It has been a long but wonderful first day of school. I want to just give a report on a couple of matters. First of all, the opening of school today, or schools today, was outstanding. I want to thank all of the teachers who did a fabulous job in making sure the classrooms were set up and ready to welcome our 22,000 students back to the district. Within 30 to 40 minutes of the opening of each school, kids were already engaged in content-based learning. Teachers were driving a rigorous start to the school year, and that was extremely exciting to see. I had an opportunity after the bus tour this morning to go visit five additional schools. I will be visiting a few more schools tomorrow, and as in kind of a replication of what I did last year, I will be dedicating, and this is good for the public to know, because you won't find me on Wednesday mornings anywhere near my office unless something major comes up. I am in schools on Wednesday mornings throughout the school year and will continue to do so. It gives me an opportunity to hear from teachers directly, and Hi Saphiani had made the suggestion, so I am there. I'm in agreement with you. I'm also very excited that the buildings, as I went into them, they looked fabulous. And I issued a thank you to all of the custodians earlier today for the fantastic work that they did over the summer and over this past week to ensure that our buildings were up and ready and looked great to welcome our children, faculty, and families. We had the ribbon cutting for the Welcome Center today. You heard that mentioned several times. We had a bus tour today to three schools, and I thanked the board members who were able to make it. It was a fantastic bus tour in that we had board members, city council members, business partners, nonprofit leaders, and administration on one bus, visiting three schools and really getting a sense of what is happening, the great work that's happening in this district from pre-K through 12. And I thought it was a great time together. I thank everyone for coming out for that. Yesterday, we had a convocation ceremony. Seventeen hundred-plus teachers and their principals attended an opening event at Weaver Auditorium, and we had a fabulous time together, and I thought it was a great kickoff to the year. We had an alum speak at the morning and the afternoon session, who came back and talked about, each of them talked about the impact, what was meaningful in the impact of teachers and their aspirations and what they were able to achieve. And it was a very memorable event, and I thank everyone who was able to join us for that great event as well. I'd like to give an update now as well concerning Opportunity High, that was one of our major moves this summer. We discontinued the lease on 875 asylum. We will continue, and this board has made a commitment to continue to look at decreasing the number of leased buildings and increasing and maximizing the use of our existing buildings that we have throughout the city. Opportunity High moved into the building on Washington Street that they are now sharing with Adult Education, and there were a number of activities that took place in order to ensure that that building was ready and that space was ready for students to come into the building today. There's still more work to do, and so I wanted to just share publicly that while there was the demolition and fixing up of some walls to accommodate the school, there was replacement of ceiling tiles and floor tiles, there was cleaning up of the area, there was work that we needed to do on the floors. We bought some new furniture, that there is some additional work that will happen over the next few weeks, but it will happen in accordance with what the principal, the school governance council, and the students want to see in terms of having a building and space there that they can be equally proud of. And so there are air conditioning units that are, that have been ordered and should be in shortly, and we'll be putting those in place. We have revisited the security system in the space that they are in, and they have requested some additional cameras. We're putting those in. We are also putting in light fixtures that the school has requested and installing over the next few weeks all of the computers and smart boards to support the classrooms, which should be completed by September 24. The lunches, for those who are interested, those are fixed off-site and are delivered there, since there isn't a full kitchen there in the upstairs for that school. But the school is up and running as of today, on time with the rest of the district, and we will be spending about another $400,000 to complete the work, to make sure that this is space that the kids can be just as proud of as they were of their 875 asylum site. So I wanted to provide the public an update on that important move. I also wanted to provide, yes?
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
I think, at this time, I think, you know, I'm cautiously optimistic that we can move OPP, I'm sorry, is it?
Opportunity High.
Into the adult learning building, but I do have some concerns about mixing two groups of populations in which there are essentially groups of people that are getting a second chance, and I think anytime you have a co-location of two different schools in one building, there's always the possibility of conflict between the two groups. So my question, I have two questions. One, what sort of academics, I just want to see how this is going, but I don't want to wait until the end of the year. I'd like to have a more, kind of a quicker update than the end of the year.
I could certainly provide an update to the board concerning the move. We are proactively having the two schools work together, so there are no conflicts or that the conflicts can be resolved quickly. There are separate and unique spaces. Adult Education's on the first floor exclusively. The Opportunity High School is on the second and third floor exclusively. They have separate stairwells, separate security systems, separate resources, separate staff, unique classroom spaces that belong to them. And so we truly are having unique spaces that belong to each of the programs, and I think that is absolutely important. The other matter is that I will, just in a few weeks, be providing an update on adult education as well. There are some developments there that are very exciting and are part of the workshop agenda, as well as the reports that the board will receive, where we'll be talking about new developments and further developments for adult education as well, so that we can meet. Those are two very different populations of students, both very important to us, and I appreciate your question.
Thank you.
So the other update I want to give you was Commissioner Pryor held a welcome-back for all of the superintendents across the district recently. He was joined by Governor Malloy as a welcome-back to the superintendents. The report that was provided by the commissioner, as well as partly by the governor, really focused on providing high-level support across the state to turnaround schools. As you're aware, Milner Elementary School is one of our turnaround schools that the state is working with us on, as well as focusing on additional grants and funding opportunities to districts to do reform-related work. I was thrilled to have the governor and the commissioner acknowledge the Hartford Public Schools at this meeting for the quality of our reform work. New Haven was the other district that was acknowledged as well, and we were acknowledged for the quality of our Milner turnaround plan. We were acknowledged for two other grants that we have been successful on that will be coming to the board. One is funding to open up another Family Resource Center at Clark, and the other is some additional early reading, early literacy grant funding that will be provided to us as well, that will be targeted towards Burns Elementary School. And I believe that we're the only district that actually were successful in all three turnaround grant opportunities that were put out there publicly. We were acknowledged for the quality of our grant applications, because our grant application has a cohesive reform strategy behind it, and so we were noted as the only district in the state that currently is working at this level of cohesiveness and quality. And I say that's kudos to the entire district for the work that has been happening here out of the Hartford Public Schools. There also was a presentation around Common Core and what's coming down the line. The commissioner is certainly urging everyone to get ready and start integrating those, the Common Core standards into our curriculum. As you're aware, we have been doing that for several years here in the Hartford Public Schools, and will continue to develop our curriculum and assessments in alignment with the Common Core. The final part of my presentations, I just wanted to just highlight some things that I have as priorities out of my office for the first quarter. One I mentioned earlier, which are my weekly site visits to schools and dedicating those Wednesday mornings, prioritizing those Wednesday mornings to be in schools. Meeting, last year I met with parents as part of those meetings, walked around and met with teachers in their classrooms, and was able to get feedback directly from those two groups. The other is that the month of October in the Hartford Public Schools will be College Awareness Month, and we'll have a whole set of programs that we will be rolling out related to the work that we're doing around college advising and awareness 6th through 12th grade. The elementary schools will also be involved with this as well from pre-K to 5. I will be repeating what I did last year. I held five community forums throughout the city to talk about the strategic operating plan. I will be holding those forums again this year, and will be rolling out that schedule. Dr. Carol Collins-Ayandjala will be joining me for those forums, and will be hosting some herself, as well as a chief academic officer. And finally, I wanted to also emphasize that I will be reaching out broadly to get input into the parent engagement plan framework. We will be working intensely on this over the next few months, and we'll be bringing forth a framework to the board for discussion, but not until it's well vetted in the community we have that input into the plan and into the framework. So we're very excited about this. The important part of this is to complete that planning work prior to the budget process so that we can also properly budget to support the parent engagement plan connected to the larger communications plan that the board will also be vetting later this year. And with that, that concludes my report.
Thank you. At this time, we'd like to hear from our committees. Is there a report coming from the Human Resources Committee?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. On August 22, 2012, at 8:30 a.m., the Human Resources Committee met during executive session to discuss the results of Dr. Kishimoto's end-of-the-year performance evaluation. Presenters were Richard Waring, Rover Cotto, Sharida McIntyre, myself. Final report is being prepared and will be presented to Dr. Kishimoto before September
Thank you. At this time, is there a report coming from the Policy Committee? Thank you, Mr. Cotto.
Policy Committee met last Monday. We discussed the acceptable computer network use policy, which is for first reading for students and for staff today. We discussed the review, we actually reviewed and discussed the grading policy. There's some concerns for members of the committee regarding what exactly an F means and whether a 55 is awarded to a student that gets below a 50. So we had a discussion about that. Related to that, we discussed the online learning credit recovery program and to what extent students are earning credits as a result of online learning. We will have a report that's are earning credits as a result of online learning. We will have a report that's kind of brings that all together at our workshop on August 2nd. If you see that, if you have the flyer in front of you, it's titled College Readiness Approach and Indicators. So we'll be, we'll have a longer discussion which will incorporate part of that in there. In attendance were Mayor Sagata and Dr. Nardone and Dr. Kishimoto as well.
Thank you. Are there any other reports? If not, we'll move on to our business agenda.
Oh, we're going to go to it after the agenda? Okay.
Yes, yes. So let us move on to the first item on our business agenda and that is our administrative appointments. The Hartford Board of Education approves the superintendent's recommendation to appoint the following individuals to the positions indicated. Dolores Cole to the position of Executive Director of Early Literacy and Parent Engagement effective August 29th, 2012, and Doreen Crawford to the position of Principal, Jamoki Academy at Milner, effective August 20th, 2012.
I am pleased to introduce both individuals into these positions. Dee Cole, as you know, came recently to the board for a different position. We had not fully developed the Early Literacy and Parent Engagement Department. We had not yet hired Eddie Hennaw into the Assistant Superintendent position and as we built out that department, we felt that a more appropriate role in terms of taking advantage of the expertise of Dee Cole and her work at Webster Magnet School was much more appropriately directed at a very critical position as Executive Director of Early Literacy and Parent Engagement. Doreen Crawford is a highly experienced educator, if you can just raise your hand, she's actually with us here today, who is one of the founding members of Jamoki Academy Charter School and has been a leader there. We are excited that as part of the design work that was done in partnership with the design team that was approved by this board and the State Department of Education was at the table, we have asked Ms. Crawford to come and be part of our staff and lead our Jamoki Academy design within the Hartford Public Schools as part of the Thurman L. Milner School. And so what was important to us is we had high level of fidelity in terms of implementation and commitment to this design. And so bring forth Doreen Crawford as Principal of Jamoki Academy at the Thurman L. Milner School.
I'd like to entertain a motion. All in favor, I will, yes?
So moved.
So moved, thank you. Second, we have, it's been properly moved in second. Is there any questions, any discussion?
I have a couple of comments.
Okay.
Thank you. First of all, I had asked for a explanation, a chart of the position of Executive Director of Early Literacy and where it fit into our central office organization. So just my initial question is, where does the Executive Director fit into the central office organization? Who is this person, who is this position supervised by likewise? Who does this position, who reports this particular position?
The Executive Director, actually in your Friday packets, I included the organizational chart as requested by this board. The Executive Director reports to the Assistant Superintendent of Early Literacy and Parent Engagement. In fact, this position is the right-hand person to Eddie Hennaw who serves in that position. This position has the Director of Literacy for the district report to her along with two principals who are focused on the pre-K3 design. One is the Betancet's Early Reading Lab School and the other position is the Principal of Burns Latino Studies Academy as we roll out this Early Literacy Grant Application, Grant that we received from the state for the pre-K3 work that we're doing at Burns as part of the turnaround work that we're doing there.
My follow-up question for this one, and it's my last about this particular position is, given that this is a very high-level position related to parent engagement, how will this, will Ms. Cole and in this position interact with the new Welcome Center, which has kind of taken on a new life down in the first floor of 960 Main?
The, the Director of the Welcome Center reports to Mr. Hennaw. There is an ombudsman responsibility of the Director of the Welcome Center and as the ombudsman, she has also a direct report to me.
Okay, thank you. That answers my questions about those particular, that particular position. My second question is related to, did you vote the Thurman L. Milner School, the Jamoki Design? My question is, did the school governance council have a process in which it selected from a number of different options at this principal, this principalship?
No, we used a different process here. The school governance council in some ways began to change over the course of pulling together the application for the state because teachers had elected to take positions in other schools. We had consistently, we did start with some of those teachers at the table, but throughout the entire process, the parents who serve on the school governance council were at the table pulling together and signing off on the plan that went to the state. The other position, I'm sorry, the other representative on the school governance council would have been the Principal of Thurman L. Milner Elementary School who was placed in another position. And so that was, we had an interim during the summer school time period to cover summer school. And then we had the, the community representative, which is Catholic Charities, who was with us at the table during the entire period in which we developed the turnaround plan. The turnaround plan is the plan that identified the leader as someone who has the Jamoki Academy experience. That turnaround plan was signed off on by everyone at the table and most importantly, had a separate, side letter of support from the school governance council's parents. And so that was all submitted to the state as part of the plan.
Okay, just a follow-up, another follow-up question. So I guess what you're saying is that there was a plan, part of the plan identified the principal, the plan was put in front of parents and the parents?
Of the school governance council.
Of the school governance council and the turnaround committee and then they had to sign it. So essentially, that's a long way of saying, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, that the parents had no choice as to the principal of this particular school in addition to no choice about the design of the school.
I don't agree with you. The parents were at the table the entire time and their, their voice and input was highly respected. And in fact, when they said they wanted to meet separately as a school governance council to make some decisions about what went into that plan, I gave them a staff member to meet with them twice. They made their decision and we inputted that into the plan. They were highly involved members of this plan. There was also a board member, Richard Waring, who was assigned to be part of that committee, who was at the table with us as well.
Well, I guess we're gonna have to disagree on this. I think there's a difference between being at the table and being served something and being the people that decide what's gonna get served at the table and how it's gonna get served. And I think this is a clear indication of parents being at the table and being force-befed a particular decision about a principalship and a design. So I, I don't think I can in clear conscience of vote yea or nay on this particular, given that we haven't followed our policy on redesigning a school and on selecting a principal. This is not an indication of equality of these individuals, but I think that we owe it to our parents to ha, to actually honor the process of designing a school and actually selecting a principal. So thank you for answering those questions.
I, I do want to add that state legislature put a process together for how turnaround plans will be put together. The superintendent schools does not have a vote at the table and yet the first thing that I did was ensure that there was consensus around the table that the school governance council would have, parents of the school governance council would have an equal voice at the table. And so we had the teachers' union there, we had the school governance council there, we had staff from my office, we had staff from Jamoki Academy, we had the State Department of Education there and we had a board member there for the entire process. And I do feel that this was a process that was quite a model of the kind of collaboration that we want to see at the table when we're doing the school design.
Yes, it reminds me of a follow-up question if I may, Miss Chair, Madam Chair. A follow-up question and it's somewhat related to this is that we are hiring a principal here, but does this, I guess this is a yes or no question and may need some more elaboration, but does the Hartford Public Schools have any legal contractual agreement with Jamoki Academy at all? Do we have any financial relationship between those schools? Because last I checked, this Board of Ed never signed any sort of agreement with Jamoki. So I'm curious as to how this all works and whether, you know, what, what is the, what is the chain of command? Does this principal, this principal report to Hartford Public Schools or does this principal report to Jamoki Academy? And I think, I think that there's a lot of concerns, I think, that, that haven't really been addressed yet.
The principal reports to me. The principal is an employee of the Hartford Public Schools along with all of the teachers at the school. The Thurman, Thurman L. Milner School remains a Hartford Public School. We are engaging in a management agreement contract with Jamoki basically to implement their design. That focuses primarily on the curriculum albums that they use, the parent engagement structure that they use, the school climate structure that they use, but this is a school that is the Hartford Public Schools. And so in appointing Ms. Crawford to this position, she is an employee of the Hartford Public Schools.
Can we see a copy of the, I think, the agreement that we are engaging in, the contract? Because I haven't, I haven't seen that and I don't know if it's, has it been drafted or did someone sign it without, without me knowing or this board knowing? I'd like to see that contract agreement.
I think this board absolutely should see that contract agreement. This is an MOU that's being drafted. I have been working back and forth with Dr. Sharp, who is the CEO of Jamoki Academy. As you are aware, we are, we were under an extreme time crunch with the state and there were things that were not going to flow in the best timeline and sequence, but there was a commitment from this board to move forward with this application. And because of the sequence not being ideal, this board appointed Mr. Waring to work directly with me. Not only did Mr. Waring work directly with me, but Mr. Polin also was involved throughout this time period. And so we had two board members who were involved throughout the process. But there is an MOU that is in draft form.
My last question is, was there a request for proposals, an RFP, put out for this particular contract? That's my final question.
This is a memorandum of understanding that is driven by the application that we put forth to the state and so there would be no RFP.
Thank you.
Okay, we still have an item that's before, for a vote?
I do have a question.
Okay, yes.
For, through the chair. Dr. Kishimoto, how many literacy directors do we have in the system? I don't have the full chart.
In the entire school system?
No, in the entire system. Do we have, I know that Dee Cole will be for early literacy, right? And then we have another literacy director.
We have a Director of Literacy who is charged with the curriculum. We have one person in Mr. Hennaw's office that focus pre-K3 and under Dr. Collins-Ayangla. Jeez. I apologize. We have one or two in your office. We have one, one focus on, one.
One.
So we have one in curriculum and one in early literacy.
So hopefully the students will be working together.
Yes.
As you're putting, even though they're in different areas.
Absolutely.
So from the pre-K to three and then basically with Dr. Collins?
We have, and I think you've heard me say this a couple of times in, in different contexts, which is we are working much more around teams, around the goals of the SOP and less around the strict department structure of the past.
Which I'm, I'm thrilled that you're doing that.
And I think what you raise is absolutely important. Yes.
Okay, very good.
Yes, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, through you, Madam President. I will support both of these appointments. I think that we've been on a very, very intense and intensive sort of process with the Milner and trying to turn that school around. So I'm hopeful that we can get on the path of making some real progress at Milner and whatever I can do within my other hat as mayor to be supportive in addressing some of the conditions, neighborhood conditions around Milner, which I think is also critical to the success of Milner, albeit at your disposition. Also, I'm glad that you clarified the organizational structure for the Early Literacy and Parent Engagement with regards to the visitor center. Based on experiences that I've had wearing my other hat, I think that when you have multiple layers of supervision in an office that requires advocacy and has an ombudsman, I can never say that, and I'm an attorney.
Well, I'm trusted today.
My, 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 ombudsman.
There you go.
It's late, it's been a long day. That too many layers tend to strangle that, that ability of, of the office to advocate. So I'm glad that, that we've kept it somewhat narrowed. And, and that's it.
Are there any further comments? If not, then we can take a vote on the matter before us. All in favor for the appointments that have been read signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed? Any abstentions?
Stand up.
We have two abstentions and the item carries. The next item on our agenda is a contract approval. Put on my glasses. MRW Connected LLC, $200,000. The Board of Education authorizes the superintendent to execute a contract with MRW Connected LLC for the 2013-2014 Choice Marketing and Recruitment Campaign for the term of August 28th, 2012 through June 29th, 2013 at a cost not to exceed $200,000.
Before you is an item that comes before the board around this time annually. This is the marketing contract for Choice. This year, we are combining the marketing approach for Choice to focus on all of our schools so that we represent our district with one voice, with one marketing campaign. And so what you have before you is an RFP that was issued with that development. As you maybe recall, last year when we had the Choose Hartford campaign, there was an effort to ensure that we had sufficient marketing around our non-magnet schools because of the extensive marketing that happens statewide and through the State Department of Ed of our magnet schools. The, while those were run separately, the focus this year really is on bringing those together. As we had stated a year ago, we would bring this campaign together as a campaign for all of the choices in the school district as one marketing campaign. There was an RFP that was issued on June 22nd and we had a response to that RFP by various well-known organizations who, I believe all of them who responded had worked with us in the past and was, and all were of high quality. And a selection was made based on the application and their presentation. And so that is the application that is before you.
At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion.
So moved.
May I have a second? May I have a second?
Second.
Are there any questions?
Just a question. Where does Bowser come in with relationship to this? Will the board be coming back for an additional contract for marketing, or is this in place of Bowser, or?
Yes, Bowser was successful last year in the contract, and so they would have had this, an opportunity again to respond to the RFP. This is a one-year contract, and so I bring this to the board annually.
And is this a Hartford-based company?
This company is out of Massachusetts, and it is, this company was successful in a prior contract with us, and built our website.
Thank you.
I have a question. Do we have any Hartford-based companies apply to compete for this contract?
Yes. Bowser is one of those companies that actually did apply, and actually went through the process, which is a two-faced process of reading of the materials, and then of the actual companies presenting to a committee. That included folks from the Communication and Innovation Office at the central office, principals of schools, and the city procurement office as well was present in both presentations.
Any further questions?
Yes. A few questions, thank you. Mr. Mayor, were you finished?
Yes, I'm done.
Okay. First question is, and it is related, but does the Hartford Public Schools have a constitutional obligation to provide a free and equal public education? It's a yes or no question.
The answer is yes.
Okay, great, that's what I thought. So why are we advertising for kids to come to school when it's our constitutional obligation to provide a free and equal public education? I'm not really sure why, why we're doing this.
We have a system of schools where there are choices that our families need to be exposed to, and so the marketing approach is about the exposure of all of the school options that our families have. We have, under the CHEF decree, we have, we are obligated to provide access and information to families about the magnet options. The state also provides additional information and advertising around the VOTEC and VAWAG options. Where we were becoming overshadowed and silent was on our non-magnet, non-VAWAG options, non-VOTEC options. And so our parents were receiving information about some of our schools and not about other schools. And so there was a decision made to make sure that we advertise our non-magnet schools as well. What we have before us is something that we had committed to, which is, let's get to a point where we're talking about all of our schools at one time, so our parents aren't receiving information from different groups about the different types of schools that they have an opportunity for. They still have, obviously, we still have to educate every one of our parents. If they are through CHEF, if they are selected to attend a school outside of Hartford, then they have an opportunity to do so outside of Hartford in one of those CHEF options. If they make a decision to stay or return to Hartford, then yes, we are obligated to educate them here, but we are also have a high level of accountability and responsibility to provide our families with the type of information they need to be informed about their choices.
My follow-up question, thank you, Dr. Ishimura, that was very, very strong defense of school choice. My follow-up question is, are you, are folks in the administration aware of the fact that we recently had a demographic study? This was in relation to the Weaver Design Specifications, and I think maybe the West Middle Design Specifications. And in that study, one of the, one of the core assumptions and findings of the study was that it actually didn't matter what the option, or the theme, or the marketing, or the label that you put on a school. The key assumption was actually that magnets were far more attractive, simply because they were magnets. And the demographic study didn't actually account for any different sort of, any differentiation between schools. They said it simply didn't matter. So I'm curious as to whether the administration has read this report that has basically found that the differentiation doesn't matter, and therefore it would seem that, it seems a bit odd to spend $200,000 to talk about the differentiation when even the demographers have said it doesn't really matter. So I'm just curious as to whether you're aware of this finding, of the demographer or not.
Considering I asked for this report to be done, and asked, and actually worked with the agency to have it done in order to inform our work, yes, of course I have read the report. We have, the issue of choice is, it's not a black and white issue. There are many complications to this, and what we need to do is make this as simple as possible for our parents. CHEF brings a complication to a set of information that our parents receive about their CHEF-related options, and that, that information cannot be one-sided without providing the information to families about their other options as well. The demographic study is not meant to be a study about any type of research-based questions that provide these conclusions. The demographic study is meant to give us our demographics, so that we can make decisions about schools that we may want to shut down in the future, those tough decisions, schools that we may want to expand upon, schools that we may want to build. This is really helping us understand what's happening in our community in terms of demographics, so that we are well-informed in the decisions we're making. That really is about enrollment, and I think it's less about a study, it is not meant to be a study about choice. And so I, I would not want to mix one with the other. It is not a choice study, it's a study, it's a demographic study.
Are there any other comments? Then can we take a vote on the item that is before us? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
The item carries? Item three on the agenda, contract continuation approval. Northwest Evaluation Association, $276,000 for the fiscal year 2012, 2013, and then $225,400 for the fiscal year 2013 through 2014. Northwest Evaluation Association will contract with the Hartford Public Schools to provide testing and reporting services, commonly referred to as measures of academic process, progress, excuse me. The MAP test supports the district's systematic intervention plan. The result will establish a baseline and allow educators to identify learners in need of additional support. The Hartford Board of Education authorizes the superintendent to approve the continuation of the contract with Northwest Evaluation Association for the period of August 28, 2012, through August 27, 2013, at a cost not to exceed $2276,600, and for the period of August 28, 2013, through August 27, 2014, at a cost not to exceed $225,400.
Yes, thank you. This is an item that relates to our periodic assessments throughout the year. I have mentioned to you before that we have implemented this assessment in grades second through ninth grade with approximately 4,000 students, or just under 4,000 students. This assessment is, is a computer adaptive assessment, which is what the S-Back assessments will ultimately be in 2015, 16, from the state. This assessment is also aligned with the Common Core, which is work that we need to be doing now, in order to ensure that we have a clear indication of where, how our students are progressing in terms of meeting the Common Core standards. The contract before you expands this assessment so that it is available, it is administered three times a year in grades, grades one through 12. This assessment allows us to measure student growth throughout the year, identify where students need interventions, and then will inform our entire intervention structure, as you're aware, is one of our strategies as part of our strategic operating plan. This assessment also provides immediate feedback to teachers by student, that teachers can use to adjust instruction immediately, to ensure that students' needs are met. We can also, and will be using this assessment, to identify students who are gifted and talented, or gifted students, as well as students who need a variety of interventions. It provides an opportunity, a very accurate way in which we can measure student growth over time. And so this is the next level of implementation of work that we've had in place for several years now.
Mr. Mayor?
Just a question, have you had an opportunity to evaluate the first couple of years of implementation of this system?
Do we want to make a motion?
Oh, did we need a motion? I'm sorry. I'd like to entertain a motion at this time.
Move.
Second?
Second.
It's been moved to second. Any questions? Mr. Mayor?
Madam Superintendent.
Yes.
Dr. Ishimura, have you had an opportunity to evaluate the first three years of the implementation of the system, in terms of its?
Two. I'm going to ask Leslie Fredericks, who oversees our Department of Intervention and Assessment.
This was our first year of the implementation, was the last year, and we were primarily using it for ninth-grade students, but we allowed schools to opt in and use it for other grades, so we were able to test from second grade to 10th grade throughout 26 schools, about 3,800 kids. And the evaluation was that, that the schools found it very helpful. They were able to use the data to identify their students that were more in need of intervention. They were able to identify how their school was doing overall in relation to the Common Core state standards. The assessment that we were using in the past was more aligned to the CMT and the CAP, so that it was able to give them more accurate information moving forward.
And this assessment will not be added to a series of assessment, it actually replaces existing assessments.
Mm-hmm. And how many students will be covered by this contract?
We're planning to test all students from first grade to 12th grade. And this was our first experience with the computer adaptive testing, and given, scaling it up to more students, and it was very successful. We found even the second graders were able to take this assessment online.
And how will this interact or relate with the state efforts for computerized testing?
Well, one is, it allows us to implement assessments that, that will help us to look at where our students are relative to the standards that will be, that we're fully accountable for as of 15, 16, 14, 15.
14, 15. So in 2015, we'll be fully implementing the new S-Back, and, but we'll have interim assessments leading up to that, so this is helping us to get ready with the technology, as well as the computer adaptive testing, as well as seeing how students are doing with the Common Core state standards. It's going to really help us with the readiness.
We have at least one other district, and I'm not, I'm not sure how many more are doing it, full district, but several districts are already moving forward with this assessment to prepare for the S-Back assessments and for Common Core readiness. Bristow, I know, is one district that will be fully implemented district-wide as well.
Any other comments? Yes, Mr. Coe?
I just wanted to make sure.
Okay.
My first question is, how will this, how will this test and the results be used?
Yes.
Go ahead.
The assessment is meant first and foremost to help teachers, to inform the teachers' work in the classroom. And so the teachers receive immediate feedback by student, and so they can use it to adjust instruction. The assessment also provides us, as a district, information on how well our students are mastering the standards of the Common Core standards, and how well-aligned our curriculum is in preparing students relative to those standards.
It has an extensive reporting system, and then even a group students for the teachers, it helps them to see exactly what students need. It has 150 reports, and we're planning to focus in on five primary reports. We have an extensive PD plan for teachers. They're, they'll be getting information on how to administer the test, and then information on how to look at the reports, and then information on how to use that data to help their students.
I also want to remind the board that we did provide the ninth-grade MAP results at the board retreat, and that was that, that data that excited all of us from the perspective of, one, the urgency of our work in high school, because it provide, and secondly, the fact that it provides very detailed information on the percentage of students who need the highest level of intervention, and then graded it up to students who are mastering the standards in the Common Core. So it allows us to see how many, what percentage of our students are where in terms of the need for intervention.
A couple of follow-up questions. I think it's curious that we need a half a million dollar computer test, a computer-generated test, when teachers have been for maybe 200, 300 years, at the very least, figured out what are the needs of their students, and how to better inform their instruction based on tests, quizzes, projects, and those sort of things. So it's kind of funny that we need just an half a million dollars doing something that our teachers shouldn't be doing, or ought to be doing. So I wonder if this is some sort of indication about the ability of our teachers to actually assess students and what they need in class? Is that, is that an indication of our teachers' ability or inability?
Absolutely not. Our teachers find this to be an important tool that they can use to be able to monitor student learning and progress throughout the year.
Follow-up question. How much class time or instructional days are taken up as a result of this particular assessment?
We're going to be assessing three times throughout the year, and there are three assessments. There's reading, math, and language. They take about an hour each. Because it's computer adaptive, students only need to take as long as it takes for them to be able to get a score. Before that, we were using the CMT-aligned test that was much longer. There were eight assessments that were given over time, as well as all the time that it takes to pass out materials, collect materials, scan, bubble in, you know, we don't have to do any of that with the computer adaptive testing.
You had mentioned earlier that this is aligned to the, what's called the Common Core state or national standards, and then the assessment system is called S-Back or Smarter Balance. I'm curious as to why we would, why would we be assessing students taking a test, using a test, that is aligned to a set of standards, a test, that really is not, hasn't been implemented yet as far as being assessment? So in other words, like, why is it that we're testing kids in ninth grade on Common Core stuff, but next year they're going to take the CAP in 10th grade? And that's, it's a different system of things, and like, it doesn't seem like it matches up very well.
Well, even though the assessment hasn't come in fully force yet, there's, we've also, we've implemented the curriculum district-wide, using Common Core state standards. So we have to start now. We need those two years to be able to get our students ready. It's going to be much more rigorous. We need that time to prepare them, and the assessment is going to help us to prepare them.
Okay. My follow-up question, I guess, and my last question is, related to the mayor, I thought he had a fantastic question when he said, have the results been evaluated? We had a young, young man here, Mr. Holzer from Achieve Hartford, who mentioned the fact that the achievement, as measured by tests, on the CAP, has been flat, relatively flat, for the last, at least, year or two. So I'm curious as to whether this is actually helping our ninth graders get prepared for 10th grade or not, and how rigorously we've actually evaluated this particular investment that we've taken. So I think, you know, kudos to the mayor for asking that question, and I just want to, you know, second it and say, you know, what is our evaluation of this program?
This has been, this assessment has been implemented at Pathways to Technology and Design for several years, and in fact was the means by which that principal and leadership team used to improve the curriculum, as delivered curriculum, the day-to-day instruction, and what teachers use to team up. what teachers use to team up and to look at student progress over time. It's been highly effective there, and if you follow Pathways' trajectory of performance on the CAP, but also across the board in terms of student success in graduating from the school, retaining them in the school. This was one of the assessments that they used. This led us to then introduce this assessment to the other principals throughout the district as a promising practice and to institute a pilot in the lower grades because it was an assessment that was available across the grades. It allows us to monitor student progress throughout the year, and so it's a very useful assessment that doesn't end up being lost in the time it takes to score it and to have the kind of teacher impact on the score. It is generated and has been well-vetted nationally as well across districts.
My final point, not, I just want to make it clear to the public that I think using norm, kind of normative assessments like this where kids are compared to a national database of kids can be helpful to understanding where our kids are in terms of like the basics, so to speak. So, you know, that being said, you have to also be cautious when you see the results because you are, you're getting our kids against this national database that, it's a very strange way of doing it, but that's how it's done. But I'm not so sure at this point that the investment is really worth, you know, worth it yet. I really haven't seen kind of the payoff of this particular program, so I'm not quite convinced yet, but I will say that, you know, formative assessment, it's a fair practice, you know, it's a helpful practice, using kind of these normative assessments sort of things where you're comparing kids can be helpful, but I'm just not sure yet that a half a million dollars for this particular thing, when we otherwise could do it for free with kind of paper and pencil formative assessments, you know, I think that it doesn't quite justify that particular investment yet, so.
One of the things that this allows us to do is to look at growth over time too, which we wouldn't be able to do with a paper and pencil test. So we'll be able to see for several years our students making progress.
Question, how will the results be used beyond the teacher, kind of using those, using results by student to support intervention efforts? Will the data be shared with parents? How else will that data be used?
Definitely shared with parents and identifying what students need for interventions and if those interventions are successful with the students.
And what's the process for that? Is it an ongoing or regular communication to all parents?
During parent conference time.
Okay. Thank you.
It also helps to tie the results of the assessments and the progress students are making directly to an intervention structure. And it also, I think, will help us tremendously at this level. We've had this conversation at the board level over the summer about the high level of interventions that are needed for large groups of students, particularly in grade nine and 10. And so this allows us to attach, to have a measure, a way of measuring progress and a way of saying, students in this group of interventionees will receive these intervention services. And those services for this percentage of number of students are going to cost us X amount and help us to build a budget around that.
Any further discussion around this item? If not, are we ready to take a vote? All those in favor of the item before us, please identify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed?
Nay.
Any abstentions? The item carries. The next item is a first reading, revised policy number 411, 8.6 acceptable computer network use, employee use. Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped an item. Item number four, contract continuation approval, Sun Guard Public Sector for 118,125. Performance Plus is a web-based district-wide system that assists educators to track and analyze student performance against state standards, map and manage curriculum, as well as build and administer local online benchmark assessments. Performance Plus arms educators with information to make data-driven decisions that enhance instruction and increase both individual student achievement as well as overall district achievement. The Hartford Board of Education authorized the superintendent to approve the continuation of the contract with Sun Guard Public Sector for the period of August 28, 2012 through August 27, 2013 at a cost not to exceed 118,125.
The item before you is a continuation of a contract we currently have that allows us, our teachers to track student achievement over time and to access student assessment and achievement data, and so we're seeking the continuation of this contract for an additional year.
I'd like to take a motion at this time.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Are there any questions on this item?
I have a question, I just wanted to make a comment. This particular program, I've used it, so I'm familiar with it. I just wanted to indicate my approval of this particular item. It's pretty helpful for, particularly for teachers and administrators to compare results, to keep track of, there's different assessments, it could be tests, quizzes, whatever. It's a fairly good product as far as, you know, these computer-based things go and keeping track of assignments. It's different than a regular gradebook in that you're not really, not really keeping it as a gradebook per se, like you would with Power School or one of those other programs, but it's helpful. I think it gives the, particularly the administration, an idea, kind of an overview of things, of how things are going with. Yeah, I approve of it. My other, my only question is, do we have ability to connect Power School, because we are using Power School, right? Do we have the ability to connect Power School to...
We do, we have a nightly feed, so it uploads into Performance Plus every night so that we have that continuation of keeping that data fresh. And we've been able to upload all the CMT CAP scores into it, we've been able to upload SAT, PSAT, so any teacher who's working with those students has all of the information on their students.
Yep. Thank you.
Do you have a question?
Yes.
Very familiar with Instrument, I think that it's a great tool. In terms of the evaluation, I know in previous contracts, we have said also that this rate will conduct an evaluation. Have we conducted any evaluations in the last three years that actually shows that this product is really making a big difference in teaching and learning? And if so, where is that evaluation?
I don't think there has been a formal evaluation. I know that there were forums that were conducted and input was gathered from principals and from teachers. I don't, I'm not sure about a formal evaluation.
So we are requesting through the chair, and the board is requesting an evaluation of this specific, I mean, we value it, we think it's a great tool, but we also would like to see something like a why that actually shows that our teachers, our educators are actually utilizing the tool, and not only that, our parents are understanding what the value of this tool.
We have a usage report, so we know that they're using it. I think...
I know, but it's more so than...
But we want a formal program evaluation.
Absolutely. That's what I'm looking at. And also in, looking at the formal evaluation, also would like to know the, what is the procedural protocol for new teachers who come into the district?
We do training, yeah.
So they go through a training?
Yep. And we've been able to build capacity in the district so that we can do our own training now. So we've been doing that.
Okay. So it's just basically the formal evaluation of the instrument?
We can provide the information we have already in terms of what information we've gathered so that you have that upfront, and then I think that we should also provide to the board a format for the evaluation so that you can provide feedback as to what, whether that covers, I think, the practice of evaluation of Instruments or what we contract for is helpful.
That will be appreciated.
Okay.
Thank you.
Obdulined, thank you.
Is there any other discussion around this item? At this point, can we take a vote on this item? All those in favor, please say by, identify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? The item carries. Now we're on to the first reading of our revised policy, acceptable computer network use, employee use of technology. The Hartford Board of Education accepts the first reading of the revised policy on acceptable computer network use, and we don't need a vote for this, so.
No, yeah, thank you. It's a first reading, so I encourage the public to read, read the two documents. They're fairly similar. One is the staff policy, I'm somewhat getting ahead of myself. Agenda of item number five is for the employee use of technology, and item number six is on the student use of technology. They're slightly different, but I encourage the public to take a look at them. In particular, I urge parents to, you know, either call or email the Board of Ed to get feedback, to give us feedback and to try to make sense of the policy. Dr. Nardone and Victor de la Paz and the young lady whose name I forgot, Sarah, yep, there you go, helped us to put this together. What's that?
Sabina.
Sabina?
Sabina.
Helped us to put this together. It's basically, I can put it really simply, wrap this up. It's basically, what are the expectations for our staff, for our students in terms of using technology and what are the parameters and boundaries of that?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Coto. At this point, I'd like to entertain a motion for us to adjourn into executive session.
Before we do that, can we take up the consent agenda before we go into executive session?
Do you want to make a motion?
Can I move?
Can I ask a question? Or just make a point, point of order? The executive session may, may inform the consent agenda items.
So we're still waiting for a motion to adjourn into executive session?
So moved.
Second? I'll second. We are now in executive session. Okay, can we just go through the consent agenda? Item number seven, acting administrative appointment. The Hartford Board of Education approves the superintendent's recommendation to appoint J. Mahalco to the, to the position of acting principal, Noah Webster, Microsociety Magnet School, effective August 6, 2012. Resolution authorized signatures, child nutrition programs. The Hartford Board of Education authorizes Superintendent Christina Kishimoto or in her absence, Alexander Nardone, Chief of Staff, to sign claims for reimbursement and required reports for child nutrition programs. Item nine, grant submission, acceptance of funds, education for homeless children and youth grant, $40,000. The Hartford Board of Education authorizes the superintendent to submit the grant application and to accept funds in the amount of $40,000 for the Connecticut State Department of Education, education for homeless children and youth grant for the period of July 1, 2012 through June 30, 2015. Item 10, approval of school construction projects as complete and EDO 49F submittal. The Hartford Board of Education approves as complete the Richard J. Cancela Magnet School State Project Number 064-0292, MAG-EA, the Sport and Medical Science Academy State Project Number 064-0279, MAG/N, and the University High School State Project Number 064-0287, MAG/N, and accepts the aforementioned school projects for public school purposes. Furthermore, the Hartford Board of Education authorizes the superintendent to execute and submit the EDO 49F application to the Bureau of School Facilities for review and approval. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Are there any questions? All in favors of the items before us, vote by saying yes or yea. Any?
Yes.
Thank you. All approved, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposes? We are now adjourned. Item passed.